All right.
Ready?
Okay. I'm going to call to order the October 11, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting and say a very special happy birthday to Dr. Frazier, who is celebrating her birthday with us today. Happy birthday. You have all the candy you want. Um, next item on the agenda is item one B, Adoption of the Agenda. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Dr. French. Do we have a second? We have a second from Dr. Frazier. Any questions? We will vote, and just as soon as it pops up, there you go. Please vote. Okay, we can see from these. We'll just look. Did we? Are we waiting on? Has everybody had a chance to vote to approve the agenda? It didn't come up? Okay, so Ms. Coakley votes yet? Yes? Maybe having some connectivity challenges, we'll work through those, and that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the annual report from District Nine Constituent Board. They were unable to come at our meeting in August when we had those presentations. So we look forward to hearing from the D nine constituent board.
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Smith, and I am the Chair of St. John's Constitu- District Nine Board of Trustees. I want to start by thanking Reverend Dr. Eric Mack and his board members for giving me this opportunity to present this district report. Student transfers and concern. Student transfer application accessibility. Encourage parents to articulate clearly what the hardship is. Revising policy JFABC. County Board has supported the constituent board's decision. Continue to maintain current timeline for general transfers. Communication and supporting documentation to ensure parent prepare applications with appropriate transfer criteria. Continue to support highly engaged parents to increase positive feedback regarding D nine school resulting in fewer out of district transfer. Transfers. Continue communicating outreach with public meetings to inform constituents of educational opportunities at our schools. Enforce enforcement of policy JFAAA from Charleston County School District to ensure the proper verification is occurring in all D nine schools. Attendance zone and concerns. Increase enrollment or retain student in D nine by continuing support the development of specialized curriculum at each D nine school. Equal access to curriculum for all students across three elementary schools where space is available. Address capacity concerns with the two elementary schools on Johns Island. Capture positive D nine energy by continuing to discussion of zoning for D nine elementary schools and transportation on the islands. Discussing the impact of a new school on Johns Island. Theme or focus STEM or STEAM. Community involvement with decision decisions and location. The board is looking forward to hearing more about the location of the new school. We will prepare to rezone or make any adjustments adjustments if necessary. Student discipline appeal concerns. Decreased in disciplinary action referring from all D nine schools. The board heard a total of eight cases during the 2020-2021 school year. Zero referrals from elementary schools. Increase in positive behavior intervention system practice in all D nine schools. Continue restoring practice at St. John's High School. Continue continue second step conflict resolution program for all primary and elementary students, training for teachers and staff. Continue to encourage and practice consistent schoolwide procedures at all D nine schools. Continue to monitor monitor and correct the inaccurate preparation of behavior issues in D nine schools. Continue to support administrative leadership and high expectations regarding student code of conduct. Our strategic recommendations include. Initiate engagement with students through student council and code of conduct and district policy and procedures. Curriculum to be consistent across the board. Full implementation of project lead the way. Early childhood education center in D nine. Provide D nine schools with physical surroundings that support the 21st century learning environment to include adequate computer and internet access. Continue expansion of college courses and initiatives and college exposure to our high school students. Continue to provide financial incentives to attract and retrain teachers who travel to our rural areas to provide excellent learning opportunities to our students. Support mission critical incentives as it pertains to the inclusion of equality, equity, I mean, sorry. Support the heightened awareness of Gullah Geechee culture with the district. And investigate partnering with other constituent districts on Gullah Geechee culture awareness. And that is our annual report for D nine. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it, and I think we probably have a paper copy of it or electronic copy of it here somewhere. I did not put my hands on. Okay, um. The next item on the agenda is Public Comments.
Ms. Waters? Yes, thank you, Ms. Darby. We have today four individuals signed up for Public Comments. First, are we? Okay, please. I didn't head it to you in the back, Mr. Ryan Bach. Ashley Reagan is first. Okay, if Ashley Reagan is not here, then we have Hillary Kylie. Okay, no Hillary. We have Jennifer Hankey. Okay. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Jennifer Hankey. I'm a mom of two girls at CCSD as well as the daughter and a relative of a long line of teachers. I also have a degree in psychology and a master's in school counseling. I give teachers the utmost respect and thank each one of them for educating our children. So thank you, teachers, first of all, for all you do. I know we are all just trying to do the best we can for our children during unprecedented times. However, we have much more data and information than we've had in the past to make informed decisions. There are risk benefit profiles, all choices in life, and we have to be flexible to change our views as information to make good changes changes. We have tipped over from the most harmful being the virus to the restrictions from the disease being the most damaging to our population. I would argue that the restrictions, according to proven science, has always been more damaging to our children. My girls both caught COVID at CCSD schools last year while masked, distanced, and plexiglassed. However, the fear of isolation and, most recently, a purposeful shaming of my nine-year-old by a principal in front of her peers over mask mandates is what has impacted them the most, not the virus. If you talk to virtually any virologist, epidemiologist, or expert in the arena, they admit that virus is here to stay and will become endemic to our world. We are not going to stop or eliminate COVID-19 through any mass social distancing or vaccine. So what is the end game? Why are we continuing to damage our children who have such a low, poor outcome from the disease? Finally, as a professional with the master's in school counseling, I could tell you we are ignoring the massive damage we are doing to children and their social and emotional development. The youngest have critical windows of growth and development they were missing totally for the facial cues that they should be learning. What about children with disabilities, children with learning phonetics, and the simple acts of needing to connect with others as an innate need of all humans? Suicide is through the roof, drug abuse, alcoholism, and more. We are destroying these kids. We know more about the virus now. We need to get back to normal for the health of these children. Funds that were brilliantly applied to fund safety teams from this organization to keep kids safe from violence have been redirected to masking. With the recent shooting in Texas and a gun found at the CCSD school, it's a great reminder of what work the safety team was doing, and without it, the kids are a great risk.
Thank you. Next, we have Lynn Piper-Loomis.
At what point did this become less to you? We all bleed red, white, and blue. I have seen members of each of you in the society, you know, let's get down to the root of it. I've seen you guys in the community without masks on. I've seen you in your own personal lives. There's been things that have come up to the surface where you guys are not wearing the mask. But yet you're pushing the agenda across the board to make these masks mandatory, to make what is probably going to be next vaccines mandatory, when the virus has a 99.9% survival rate. So what I'm getting at is what you guys are on the cusp of doing is, I've already said, according to the Constitution, that you're committing treason. This is tyranny that you see. This is communism. This is not socialism or Marxism. We're past it. The whole mask wearing, it's the programming and the ideology behind it. Now, parents are being threatened, myself included, as domestic terrorists for standing up for this. I watched one of the board members of your school board stand down during the Pledge of Allegiance when there was a World War II veteran getting honored for his service. He was in a wheelchair and didn't see the people behind him turn their backs on the American flag. What has happened? What has happened? If you truly, truly are Americans that support the red, white, and blue, to support our Constitution and our Christian values, then you'll take your ideology and be straightforward with it. If you want communism, take your butt somewhere else because we don't want it here. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all in-person public comments. We did have about nine or 10 submissions online. They were all pertaining to masks, a mixture of support and lack of support for mask wearing. Ms. Darby, that's it for Public Comments today.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, item four, is the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. The superintendent's report is focusing on the COVID numbers that we are dealing with this week and then quickly moving into time for focus on academic achievement. So we'll start with the slides that we normally show, the last DHEC metrics. As you can see, Charleston County is still in a high spread in terms of incident rate. We're at 443 per 100,000. That's down significantly from where we were in mid-August, so we're headed definitely in the right direction. The next slide shows you where the COVID positive cases within the school district are headed, and likewise, we see a downward trend. The week of August 30th, we were at 473 positives among students and staff. Last week, we were at 95 positives, so that's an 80% decrease. So that's definitely directionally correct for us, and we are delighted to see this. We would like to see that pattern continue, and the low incidence within our schools manifest itself in the data for the next couple of weeks as well. Mr. Barroway has an operational update regarding testing.
Thank you, Dr. Paul Sweet. This is the only significant update since the last, the last board meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that you've got the most current information on our COVID testing program, which was implemented last Wednesday with a third-party vendor. It is under a grant through DHEC, so we, we as a district do not have to fund the program. We just have to make space available and make sure that it's prepared and cleaned afterwards. We've opened it up for all staff and students, and we were hoping to add family members to that, but because of the way the grant's written, we can't do that. We have to restrict it to staff and students. Both the rapid test and PCR test is offered, so we can test both symptomatic and asymptomatic students or staff. The registration address is there, but we've also offered it on the website, so folks can go out on the website. We put out an all-call. They can download that app, and it's very easy to, it's very easy to add to a phone, get the results back yourself, and you'll know right away when the testing results are made available. We're offering the testing at six different loca- offering the testing on six days, on six days a week. Tuesdays and Thursdays, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, three different sites each and one site on Saturday. And then we've implemented an overnight testing requirement for staff and students. We have very few overnight trips for our schools, but there was a lot of concern with the length of the transportation as well as the lodging at the site. And so we were working with primarily our band directors to come up with this opportunity to test those individuals before heading out on a trip, and we'll begin that this week, actually. This overall testing program allowed us to take it, that, take that opportunity onboard, and we're actually able to offer the testing at individual, at an individual site on a, on a one-time basis like this, so the students don't need to be transported to be tested for that trip, that trip requirement.
Thank you. We want to return our focus then to the, the, the mission of the school district, which is preparedness for all of our students. And for us, that means accelerating the speed at which we're closing the readiness gap for some of our children. You will see this depiction over and over. We want to focus particularly on those students who are not yet within the readiness band. To do that, it takes a clear strategy, and the board has given us some feedback on our need to be clearer about that strategy, so we're working on that as a cabinet, and Ms. Belcher is leading that effort. And we, when we present again, we should have a clearer statement of our strategy that's easier to understand and that quickly can be conveyed to others. In the meantime, though, we want to, want to talk with three principals who were able to see some incredible gains at their school. We know that to achieve those kind of gains takes hard work, it takes talent, and it takes time. And so our three principals who are presenting today are quite talented. They know the strategies that have made a difference for students over their careers. They've invested a lot of time in this work, as have the teachers and staffs at their school, so I am, Mrs. Darby, turning it back over to you so that you can open it up to the SEC Committee.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll pass it over to the chair.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. Like Dr. Paul Sweet said, we're excited to welcome three principals. I'll let Ms. Simmons and Dr. Williams kick it off.
Good afternoon, everyone. Dr. Postwood has framed it beautifully. As promised, we have three building-level leaders to share from the practitioner's point of view, the strategies, the practices they believe to be making an impact towards readiness. And so we're going to get started with Ms. Sheets, representing Charleston Progressive Academy. Ms. Sheets?
Good afternoon. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share some of the aspects of the work that is being done at Charleston Progressive Academy. First of all, I would like to start with some of our celebrations and points of pride, one of which is our math increases on our spring 21 map. Also, the fact that we are outpacing in our growth, as noted by NWA E A's similar report. We also exceeded the district's growth rate in math with 67.5% of our students showing growth. That came, we attribute most of this work to hiring of a math interventionist. We looked at our strategies and what we had previously been, been doing. So for the last two years, our math interventionist has actually provided targeted lessons for our approaching kids instead of our tier-three students that resulted in our growth. Another huge celebration that we look at is the fact that we are the only Stephen Covey Leader in Me Lighthouse School in Charleston County, and our parents, students, and faculty and staff really have a sense of pride when it comes to showing that we are a model school with the principals instilling that our students are career-ready as they start with us at Charleston Progressive. Even though our math gains have been significant and we're proud of them, we know there's work to be done when we look at reading. Our reading growth improved, but in proficiency, we declined. So we have put in measures or incentives so that we can increase in reading, one of which, we're going to leverage our adaptive digital content in the area of iReady. We have scheduled grades K through five to go to the computer lab at least three times a week. Some targeted grades are going five days a week so that we can work on a specific skill. When we analyze our data, what we saw was that in informational text, our performance was quite low. So it's been our experience from math, if we indeed target one domain and put resources and time on that domain, we can see increases. So we have done that. Secondly, as a part of Leader in Me, our data showed that our students had really increased in a growth mindset. That resulted from every student in the building actually having a leadership binder and knowing their X to Y by when. In other words, they're setting goals, and we refer to their goals as while wigs or wally important goals, both in reading and math, and they have a personal goal of their selection. But after the first administration of any test, they know where they are, and we set a goal for where they need to go. And then we don't drop it there. Weekly, they are having accountability meetings with accountability partners and their teachers so that they can determine if their strategies are working, what do they need to change, and what do they need to tweak. Finally, and in conclusion, we know that without setting goals, analyzing data, and having accountability, we will not see the growth in proficiency. At CPA, we know our work will not be done. To all of our student leaders have reached proficiency of their personal best. At the end, there should be a slight video, and I apologize ahead for the sound of Ms. Girard Janey showing her leadership binder with all students' main goals. And she's also one of the Leader in Me tour guides, because it is felt that as a leader in me school, every student is a leader and should have a role to play at the school. And basically, she was just telling what her X to Y is, what her personal goals are, as she proceeds from this year at Charleston Progressive. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Donnie Brown.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Donnie Brown. I'm the principal of Nemanger Elementary, and I'd like to start with some points of pride. Primarily, one of the first things that we're super proud of, that last year, our student percentiles grew to over thirty-two, over the 30th percentile for all grades in both reading and math, and that was significant in some grades and specifically in math, where some of our grade levels started in the teens. So we are really proud of that. We had over 60% in reading and 67% in math, meeting their growth targets, which was above the district percentage for meeting growth targets as well. We're also proud that we've lowered significantly the number of students who ended in the high-risk category on Fastbridge in grades K and one. So in reading, we feel like for both the primary grades and the elementary grades, this was partly due to the fact that we had a core reading program this year with the text selections all being on grade level. We really focused on making sure that students were reading at least at some part of every day with grade-level text. We're also proud that in, on SC Ready, we made gains in both ELA and math this year. Or last year. We know that we're not where we need to be. We had what we are really proud of, what we consider excellent growth, but our student achievement is still well below the district average and the national average. And we're, we understand that our school not get out of a priority status until we can reach somewhere near the same as the rest of the country and the rest of the district. So that's a goal that we keep in front of us at all times. In terms of impact on student outcome, one of the biggest things I think that we see is that more students are showing pride in their academic achievements. We see students more motivated to meet their academic goals. We see them being more persistent and perseverant with tasks, showing more academic grit when they're trying their, to do their work, and they're more willing to take on academic risks. You're also seeing, and I, again, I think it's due to the focus that we put on reading. More of our students in grades three through five are able to access grade-level text and read competently when they have grade-level text in front of them. And we're seeing more of our primary students in our second grade reading fluently. In terms of promising initiatives, we're, we're really proud that our advanced academic seems to be growing. We have more students in our advanced academic classes across all grades, and we're seeing more students of color in our academic, advanced academic classes. Another thing that we're doing are our school-wide team challenges. We started these last year, but really have dived into that this year. We have four teams, and each one is named after an IB International Baccalaureate student learner profile trait. So we have team thinkers, team communicators, team empathizers, and team inquirers, and they each have a different color. So our first challenge that we had this year was to see which team could have the most students to beat their fall math goal, which initially, which essentially was to beat your spring score, because their fall math goal is about the same as their spring score that they ended up with. And we had a significant number of students who did that, and they really did try hard to, to beat their spring goal. Then we have, the challenge that we just finished was our kindness challenge, which went for two weeks, and not surprisingly, team empathizers won that. And then we just started today. Our new challenge is our, is a reading challenge. So each team will build a tower of books that they complete each day and throughout the week. So the team with the highest challenge, or the highest tower, will be the winner of that challenge. And then we also initiated a STEM class in our related arts, which is going really well, and it's helping with science vocabulary and a lot of hands-on science things, something that we realize that we still need. So in conclusion, we believe that all of our kids deserve the guarantee of being able to pursue their dreams. And if you can move to the next slide, we know that And if you can move to the next slide, we know that academic achievement of students has a direct impact on their ability to pursue the dreams that they want. So what you see there is our data wall at the beginning of last year and then our data wall at the beginning of this year. And one of the things that you see, the cards in pink are the students below the twentieth percentile. Last year, we had some grades that had more than half the students below the twentieth percentile. And then if you see the pale pink, the green, and the blue are those categories from the fortieth percentile to the ninety ninth. So we have fewer students in those categories. This year, we started the year with more than half of our kids in those last three quintiles, the fortieth through the ninety ninth percentile. And we significantly lowered the number of kids who are below the twentieth percentile. We believe that the closer we can get kids to readiness at our level and college and career readiness, the more able they're going to be to be able to pursue any dream they have.
Good afternoon. I'm Janice Malone, principal at Sanders Clyde Creative Arts Elementary School. This past year has been very challenging for all of us. Sanders Clyde faces challenges on a regular basis. We have the highest poverty rate in CCSD. We have one of the highest teacher turnover rates. And we're located in one of the highest crime areas in Charleston County. But with that, we move forward. We continue to move forward. Hard work with optimism and pride. And one of those points of pride, as you can see, is that we're very proud of the growth that we're making at Sanders Clyde. Seventy point one percent of our second through fifth grade students met or exceeded their target growth goal in math, math this past school year. We're continuing to lower the risk of those students at the end of the year in reading and math, but is particularly proud of the fact that only eighteen point four of our kindergarten first grade students end of the year high risk. We're not satisfied with that, of course. And of course, integrating the arts across the curriculum has ignited a culture shift that we know need to take place, especially in a place, an environment, and a community like Sanders Clyde Elementary. Now, we own our data. While we're making growth, we're not satisfied with the achievement levels of our children because we know a lot of our children come to us with hardly any of the opportunities that we would want for our children. So with that, we know we need to increase the reading readiness of all of our children. We have to always increase math as well. So achievement remains a priority for us at Sanders Clyde. It is a priority and it is a challenge indeed, but we continue to move forward with that. The impact of our student work, the outcomes. And sometimes we have to look at the soft data as well. Is making a difference in our children, we're seeing an increase in their confidence level. Their work ethic is very important. We're moving away from that learned helplessness of not wanting to attempt the work. We're seeing that they're willing to take more risk now, which is important as we move to student achievement, to increasing student achievement. Our goal is to increase high or to move toward high student engagement. And that comes on the part of teachers as well. And with integrating the arts, we've seen a decrease in our behavior referrals because now we're seeing more appropriate behaviors and because of their confidence levels. We're seeing an increase in our attendance as well. And punctuality, punctuality is so important. We've been really challenged in that area and getting our students and our parents understand that school is important. We say to our children as we teach life skills, if you go to school on time, you'll go to work on time. If you follow school rules, you will follow the law. So these are things that we try to, values that we try to instill in our children, knowing that when we work from the needs of our children and our environment and our community, we know that we're going to continue to make gains in all areas. And we're seeing now that our children are more apt to express themselves. And we want them to do that in written and oral communication instead of having to do it physically. So we're teaching them how to use the skills more efficiently. The promising initiatives for us, as we continue to move forward at Sanders Clyde, we know that we have to always have data at the forefront. Data informed instruction is so very important. So we're taking a deeper dive into what our students are doing. Not if they're smart, but how are they smart? Because we know they are. So we have expectations of excellence through the arts. With the expectations of excellence, it carries over for the academics, their behavior, consistency across the school. And of course, data as always in all areas to help us move our school forward. And so one of the challenges, and at the same time, is one of our initiatives as to how do we build capacity? How do we maintain a strong teacher force at Sanders Clyde? What do we need to do? One of the things in order to cover some of the initiatives or even plan to do some of the things that we would like to do, we know that teachers have to know how to teach. And then the what to teach will come. And having new teachers year after year, it is exhausting. It is frustrating, but the work is most rewarding. In conclusion, for us, if you take a look, moving to the next slide. Here is a clip of one of our classrooms with high engagement, our STEAM classroom, where our children are becoming more and more actively involved, actively participating in the learning process and helping our teachers and supporting our teachers in becoming more understanding of the culture in which they're working. Because that's a culture, it's a culture shift. And when you have so many new teachers, first-year teachers, it takes time to make growth. So here we are, the challenge at Sanders Clyde is continue to get better and better in our scores by working with very new teachers. So imagine the challenge that we face on a regular basis.
So this water that I have here, class, let's shout out some numbers. How old do you think this water is, class? Anybody? Go ahead.
A billion!
Okay. Sixty seconds.
A billion years.
A trillion years. A trillion, okay. I love your guesses. In fact, class, this water is a billion of years old. Nice guess, John. So the dinosaurs could have drank this very same water that I'm about to drink.
What?
Crazy, right? Today, we're learning about the water cycle and how the water on our planet has been recycled since billions of years ago. Okay, this water is going to take us through, and we're going to make a model of the water cycle. Yes, Michael?
So the quote that you see there at the end sort of sums up the work at Sanders Clyde. If a flower doesn't bloom, you fix the environment in which it grows and not the flower. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Malone, Ms. Brown, Ms. Sheets. I know Ms. Hederick is proud and pleased as I am for this District 20 representation. River Mac, we yield the floor to you. Thank you.
Actually, Ms. Hederick. We yield all.
Thank you all so much. We're grateful for all you do. We'll open up the floor to questions now. Do you have any questions?
Thank y'all very much for those wonderful presentations. I'm just curious, do we have any data showing the growth? And I'm that of those achievements and everything, do we have that data of the, can we? Because normally when we sit and we hear all that stuff, we're actually looking at it. I like to see it. And it's wonderful that we would, you know, have all that growth, especially due to a pandemic. But those are just some of the things that I toy with in my head when we think of growth and achievements, like individually. It gets lost when we actually think about growth and achievement. We keep measuring apples to oranges. But to know that we've been through an entire pandemic and we yet had these achievements, now we have to sit there and consider to know that our children are actually achieving anyway, you know, under a pandemic. So did we actually lose anything? Did we gain anything? Or are they actually where they were in according to that, if that makes any sense? Because I'd just be, you know, astonished to know that, you know, they've been failing before we went into the pandemic. But all of a sudden, everybody's just doing wonderful now. It's great to know that, but.
Ms. Coakley, we do have data sets loaded in board docs for you to study from the July Committee of the Whole and the most recent committee of the whole. We showed our map data. We showed Fastbridge as well. We showed a comparison of how schools are doing with schools like them in the July Committee of the Whole as well. So we have a plethora of data available. I'm happy to share all of those with you, sit down with you, walk you through them. But what you've heard today, in large part from the principals, was in the height, in the midst of the pandemic. And so while all three have shown outsized, admirable, sizable growth, they all acknowledge that they're not quite where they need to be in terms of overall proficiency and achievement. And so it's not lost on us that there's still a lot of work to do, for sure.
Dr. French?
So I was really interested in the things that Ms. Sheets attributed to her, the success at her school at Charleston Progressive Academy. And I'm curious to know how, what would it take to do some of those initiatives in some of our other schools that need that kind of growth? I mean, what kind of resources do we need to provide to our other schools? And I don't know if Ms. Sheets can answer that or Ms. Simmons?
So Ms. Sheets, you can speak to how long you've been a Leader in Me school and such. So every footprint, every building really is unique in terms of demographics, in terms of the region and the constituent area and what they might need to thrive. Whereas Sanders Clyde has found success with the arts, Charleston Progressive has found success with the Leader in Me program. And Ms. Brown has found success with the Advanced Academics and the International Baccalaureate Program. And so it really is not a one-size-fits-all.
Right, I understand, but there were a couple of things that she mentioned, like having a math interventionist. I assume that having a reading interventionist also helps. And so I don't know what kind of resources that takes, you know, obviously we'd have to hire another person.
Well, well, actually, Charleston Progressive is a countywide magnet school as well and a Title I school. So we have utilized magnet allocated points as well as Title I funds to fund our additional staff. Usually after we analyze the data, we determine where funds need to go in order for us to see student achievement. So that's how we have been able to somewhat maintain and hire folks. As far as Leader in Me, we are funding that as well through Title I because it comes under social emotional. However, Leader in Me has expanded into instruction within power and instruction. So as part of Leader in Me, we actually have a full-time coach that visits the school three times a year and does webinars and conferences with me, leadership, as well as teachers that, so that we are provided that ongoing professional development throughout the year. And this is our eighth year as being a part of Leader in Me.
And then for Dr. Brown, I had a question. You were saying in the upper elementary grades, you don't see, you still have lower achievement in those grades, I believe, are growth. And I'm curious to know whether you think that's a longitudinal issue for the students. I, these students were growing better in first, second, third grade, but when they got higher, they're not growing as well, or is it a change in the population in your school that's impacting those averages?
So there's several parts to that question, I think. First of all, we did see significant growth in our upper grades. And there's no change in our population there. And we attribute that to the work that we did with a comprehensive reading program and focusing on the state standards and really diving deeply to get to the depths of the standard there. But that being said, we still do have, as you saw, a significant number of students who are one to two years behind. They've been one to two years behind for several years, and so that's a lot of catch-up growth. So with everything that we do, we work on accelerating the, like accelerating percentiles. That's something that we've worked with our teachers and also with our students. They know what their growth targets are. They know the goals that they're shooting for. And then our work is to try and make that tangible to them so that they understand what it takes to get to those goals. But for the most part, for the upper grades, that catch-up comes with a lot of time. Just really, really spending a lot of time making sure that we don't lose any academic time and that every academic minute is spent focused on the things that we know that our kids need. So we divide our time between making sure that they're exposed to really solid grade level instruction and grade level text and also differentiating at the level, whatever their instructional level is. So it's a combination of both of those things. Did that answer your questions?
I think so, yes. Thank you. And Ms. Malone, or is it Dr. Malone? I just wanted to say I appreciate what you've brought to Sanders Clyde and what you're doing. And I understand that the challenge of the teacher turnover is really big. And I hope that the district, I hope that you are able to ask for what you need from the district to get that ardent working better for your teachers as well. So if there's anything that you need, I hope you'll bring it to us.
Thank you. Ms. Fine, Coach?
So I have two questions. One, can you give us a ballpark of what percentage of the students leaving your school this year will leave on grade level? I know that all of you start with early childhood. Two of you go to sixth grade and one goes to fifth. Just ballpark, in the six or seven years they've been in the school, what percentage is going to leave this year, at the end of this year, on grade level? And do you expect to be able to impact that number between now and the end of the year? And then my second question is, all of your schools are within a mile of each other. You could literally walk a circle from Sanders Clyde back to Sanders Clyde in three point one miles. So you're very, very tightly close together in terms of your students. You have three wildly different approaches between the Stephen Covey leadership, the IB program, and the arts-infused. If we're looking to create student achievement on par throughout the district, is there anything you could tell us about which one of your programs may be the best to expand or why one and not the other? Because it's pretty widely varied in how you approach it in a very tightly geographic community.
I think one size does not fit all. And I think a lot of our children have varying, various needs. And their strength may be in one of those areas. So I think giving our children, especially in the community and where we are, giving them that opportunity to explore. And they're giving their families that opportunity to explore the kind of program that they think might best fit their child.
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt you, but that actually brings up an excellent question. Is there any consideration that families on the peninsula could explore between the three options? Because they don't, you know, y'all are attendance zones in schools except for the applied for magnet and the countywide.
Right, so I think we do get students from all over the peninsula and they just have to apply for school choice. I would say a significant percentage of our students do come from other attendance areas.
For the IB program or your feeder and abuse?
For the IB program, yes, ma'am. But yeah, it's almost like two, a feeder and abuse that's only two years and only in the kindergarten and first grade at this point.
And as for CPA, our attendance zone, as you know, is quite broad from Mount Pleasant, Ravenel up to Ashley Phosphate. So parents do have the choice, of course, to always apply. And I think all And I think all of our schools have somewhat dabbled in the other um initiatives. Because even this year, we have um our theme, our focus is STEAM. And every grade level has adopted a letter, science, technology, so that they are being exposed. So as our students move on to middle school, should they be applying or thinking about where they want to attend, they would have some experience with some other areas other than leadership. But what we do know about the leadership, those soft skills not only apply in school, they take them through a lifetime. So that never leaves them uh when they leave CPA.
I would like to say that too. I mean, because we're our school doesn't mean we also instill some of the leadership values. And of course, those advance for those children who are ready, we differentiate instruction when we do the interventions, the school-wide interventions. So a lot of the initiatives that we have, I think we all have some of those initiatives in common. We just chose to speak on different ones. You know, say.
And, and just to add to that, I think we have three different programs. But in terms of academics, we're all trying to get to the same place. So basically, the thing that makes us different or unique is just the culture around where, around which we're building our, our way to get at that. So um Leader in Me, IB, Arts is really the culture or, as Janice said, the, the soil and the environment. And um it's the way we get to the academics and, and get the buy-in from our students.
Ms. Waters?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Herdrick. My question centers, excuse me. My question centers on support for first year, first and second year teachers, since you have so many of them at Sanders Clyde. Miss, um, excuse me. And I'm wondering if um you can share some of the specific strategies that you use um to get those teachers to a level of competency that's going to get you the growth that you need.
Yeah, this is really a, a tough topic, I think, for, for all of us. And especially like a, a school like Sanders Clyde because of the, the, the many needs and, and the culture of the school. It's hard for a first-year teacher, especially they're coming from all over, first just to understand or get used to the culture and where they are. Because they all want to come in and make a difference. So that's a challenge because there are so, so many needs at the school. You have to pour and give everything. And it's hard for me as a principal to say uh to, to lower the expectations. But at the same time, a first-year teacher needs so much support to get to the point where they can really make a difference. And by that time, for some of them, they might say, I can't do this, where I can go where kids come more prepared to learn. So I really try to make sure that I'm giving them support, let them know that we're walking side by side through this process. And I'm finding even now that I have to take a pause because as a principal and being at the same school for a number of years, when you think you're making traction, you're having to back up and say, oh, I gotta start all over again to the mindset, inspiring the teachers, supporting them and the academics as well as building the culture. And uh so it's always starting over and moving forward. So I would love for my teachers to come at the summer, teach summer school, you know, so that they can start to get prepared for what's ahead. And we can work out a lot of that in summer school or for them to be able to come two weeks. That, that would be a norm, that they come two weeks so that we could do the kinds of PD and the conversations and the fleshing out that needs to happen before. And hopefully, as we build them and giving a lot of support through my instructional coaches and staying with them, time is it. You know, spending the time, whether it's in the summer or after school, knowing and compensating them for the time that they really do have to give. I tell teachers, this profession is not a seven to three and it's over, or the weekends your, are yours. You have to have time to put into the work, especially with high poverty because you're doing so much for the whole child to address that entire family. So I'm trying, as a balancing act, trying to provide the support at the same time, we have to keep this ship sailing. You know, so it's, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add, one, just thank you all so much for your presentations and for the work that you're doing. Uh it really is tremendous. And a lot of the things that we're hearing, um I'm like, I just want to hold on to them and kind of create a little like shot list of the, the things that, that we want to see in all the schools. And I know I've been into um Charleston Progressive and Mimager and hadn't visited Sanders Clyde. But just thank you all so much because I know it's, it's sort of pushing a rock uphill a lot of the time.
Dr. Frazier?
Just want to thank you all for the presentations. Uh my question's very short and simple. Um I would like to know, why do we use MAP instead of SC Ready? And I'm working with the group and we're using SC Ready, which shows the disparities between black and brown children and white children. And is there a way for us to look at the data? And we have it for the past five years. Can we look at that data and compare it to MAP, just do a layout of MAP and SC Ready to see whether we're coming up with the same disparities, which shows that um most of our black and brown children are extremely behind our white students?
Ma'am, as we presented in uh July, when we presented the MAP data, that disparity holds true in the Fast Bridge results and in the MAP results. So what you see in the SC Ready is the same. The reason we haven't been able to show longitudinal data for SC Ready is because we did not administer SC Ready because of COVID in the spring of 2020. We administered it this year. The state asked us not to look at the results from this past spring at a longitudinal level.
Right.
Historically, there's been 80% alignment between MAP results and SC Ready, but we consider both of them valued data points. We're not privileging one over the other. We want to look at both.
Okay, and, and so, but I have the data for five years. So and my question to you is, are we going to use that data to show the disparities and then target our intervention efforts to those kids who really, really need the presence of extra support in the classroom?
Again, I think we have shown the SC, the disparities, and we are using MAP results as well as benchmark assessments in the classroom to better target instruction. You really can't use SC Ready as an instructional framework because they test different goals each year as a subset of the test. So you get information on how the children did on one standard, but that may not be the same standard that's tested the following year. So that's one of the challenges of SC Ready is that there's not an annual year-over-year comparison. I think, and I may be inferring too much, your bottom line point is that we have a ratio disparity that we need to address. And the best way to do that is up our rigor game in ways that these three principals have really exemplified because they have had more than a year's worth of growth in the past year, which is a COVID year. So it is possible to move the needle, but it's hard work and these are models of how to do that.
Yeah, again, I just want to thank all the principals. I know Ms. Malone has been around for years. Um and it's good that we're holding on.
That's only because she started when she was 12.
Yeah. And so I just want to commend this administration for holding on to our seasoned teachers. We really need those teachers in these areas so that we can see the kind of growth that we are experiencing now with our students. Thank you, ladies. My hat's off to you. It's a tough job and, but who else could do it?
We have any additional questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it on the SEC agenda. Is that correct? Okay. Um next is other board committees, item six. Um well, first, I do want to repeat the thank yous. Y'all are doing a wonderful job that we recognize as a 24/7/365, so thank you. Um other board committees, audit and finance. Ms. Green or Mr. Kennedy, y'all, anything you want to point out to us?
I was waiting for the uh, for the displayed on the screen. So there, there are two informational items that will be uh presented. The annual SWMBE report of a fiscal year 21 uh and the monthly capital projects report. And then there are four items, therefore action items that are coming from the operations division, Ms. Berori. Uh one is the um annual construction plan, um excuse me, maintenance plan, uh the annual capital information technology plan, capital building program. This is phase three, a reallocation, a small amount, and then a contractual matter associated with one of the HR schools pace.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on any of those items?
So I do have an audit finance question, but it's not on the agenda. May I ask it?
Yeah, ask the question, Dwayne.
Have you begun the process of applying for reimbursement funds from um the Federal Department of Education? For the um, the protocols?
Are you talking about for the mask uh compliance? Uh we have not.
Okay, thank you.
I, I didn't hear you when you said, when we were going to um hear about those other reports that are coming forth at what meeting?
Next at the board meeting, October 25th. All right, the next item, seven, um other business is, seven A is the legislative update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can y'all hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Um I'll be very brief. Uh we compiled a post-session report uh for your review. Um we will update this document as needed and provide a presentation at your next board meeting uh based on what comes out of the Sacramento School Board Regional Advocacy Meetings. Erica and I will be attending the Low Country Regional Advocacy Meeting that will be held this Wednesday at 5:30 PM. And that concludes the legislative update for today, so uh I'd be happy to take any questions you all may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions about the legislative update? Great, fantastic report. All right, um item 7B is the Essar Advisory Team, the Board Appointees, Reverend Mack.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. Uh so I'd like to say thank you to all of the board members that submitted names uh for the Essar Advisory Team. Uh was, it's a great number of uh of names, supports that was, uh names that were submitted. Uh I have selected uh seven names that I'd like to bring forth uh for consideration um on this advisory team. Uh the, the names are as follows. Uh Deborah Grant, Paul Asper, Dawn Chows, Beverly Birch, Patrick Martin, A.J. Davis, and Crystal Rouse.
Thank you. Did, um Julie, did you get all of those? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Reverend Mack. Um. Next item is upcoming meetings. We have a special called meeting um immediately following this meeting. Um we have our board meeting on October 25th and then November meetings, November 8th and November 15th. So would everybody like, like a, maybe a 10-minute break and we can reconvene at 3:15? Would that be okay? Yes.
Um we didn't really have a chance to ask questions of the superintendent report, and I just want to ask one, hopefully a quick question. Is that okay?
Hopefully a quick, yes.
Yes, okay. So I noticed on your charts with the number of cases in the school district are going down, and that's fantastic. But what I also did, a little quick map in my head, I think that we're now seeing below the community transmission rate in our public school system, and we have been above. So do you attribute that to anything? Are we reporting differently than we were earlier in the school year? Or is, do you know why that might be?
I, I do not. I do not have any reason to speculate. I don't know, Mr. Broe.
Okay, well, it's good news.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so um we'll take a 10-minute break and we'll reconvene for the special call meeting at 3:15. So we can get Dr. Frazier out of here to go celebrate her birthday. So do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm in.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you for.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I did. Thank you for asking.
Obviously there.
Okay. All right, we're reconvened back into open session. Item four A.
I'd like to move to approve the request to remain with tuition waived for the 2021-2022 academic year.
Second.
Moved by Dr. French, second by Ms. Waters. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cash your vote.
Wait.
Okay, that motion passes. Item four B.
I have a motion.
Ms. Darby.
I move to extend the mask mandate for 30 days through November 12, 2021, and work with staff and public health experts to develop guidelines to inform mass decisions for the remainder of the school year.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Waters. Are there any questions?
So, Dr. Postwaite, based on the post and courier article and what you just said, we're talking about roughly 3% of the student population didn't want to wear a mask. Is my math right? If I take the applicants, which were 830 for exemptions, I double that, round it up to 2,000, and add the students who were at home because of mask virtual, we're up to 3.3% of the student population. Is that really how many were the, so 97% would voluntarily wear a mask?
I don't know that they would voluntarily wear masks.
Yeah. So, you're, so were there more than not, were there less than 97% prior to the mandate?
Yeah.
Yes. What were the numbers?
I would say that in some schools, it looked to me as though it might have been as few as 10% of students wearing masks.
So, did we run any numbers? Do we know that district-wide or even at a school level?
I don't believe we asked principals to keep track of who was wearing masks. Thank you.
Carrie, is there any further questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cash your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Entertainer motion for adjournment.
So moved.
This meeting's now officially.
I think we have on the open session the receipt of legal, oh, I'm sorry, I read it wrong. I thought we had C on there.
Okay, yeah, that's it. All right, this meeting now officially adjourned.
Just would like to thank you all for not having a marathon meeting again. This is awesome.
Get out of here, honey. You got a birthday to celebrate.